You won't have to bend down and lift heavy loads, but let's go look at some of those tropical plants. Of course, when you're thinking about a garden, it's not just the flowering plants and the veggies and all the rest. Sometimes you want to have, well, some ground cover. And you have some wonderful grasses here. My goodness, what kind of grasses are these?
Different, all different kinds.
All different kinds. And once you plant, will they sort of propagate on their own?
Yes.
And that'll help, that's actually good for weed control also, isn't it?
That's right.
But then, of course, if you're feeling ambitious, you can come to these beautiful hibiscus. Now, is there much care with the hibiscus?
No.
No?
Just don't overwater.
Again, not over-
Maybe once a week, we know.
Once a week. Sometimes you want to have a bit of color in your garden, and a hibiscus plant is really wonderful. And again, don't overwater.
That's right.
And of course, with our water restrictions now, that's sound advice. But then there are other aspects of a garden. Sometimes they need a little framing, or you have a view you want to block. And here we have some really big plants over here with these broad leaves. What are these?
That's a giant bird of paradise.
A giant bird of paradise. And they flower?
Yes.
Yes?
Not right now, but later, yes.
Yeah, and they get that beautiful, well, we've all seen them, that beautiful bloom. That really does look like a bird of paradise. And you can use that to, you know, hide fencing, or maybe that view of your neighbor's swimming pool. But let's move over and get to some of the tools that our seniors could use to help them make gardening easier, okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you, Jimmy.
Yeah, okay.
Now, as you can see, there is a pot for every purpose and a plant for every pot. You can spend a little or spend a lot. Some of the things that make your task easier when you're gardening are the sorts of tools you have. And they're not expensive, but these are the kinds that make your work a lot easier. And of course, if you can have a low bench, maybe the ones with wheels, so you can actually sit, if you can't work on a high table like this. Let's go through some of the simple implements that people need. We have a trowel, right? This is kind of a narrow one. And inexpensive, $3 less. And here's a little wider trowel. You want to make sure that the ground is turned right before you want to prepare it. And of course, a mini rake. Well, this is really good for cleaning out between your rows and making sure you're getting your weeds up. Then, of course, you must have the clippers. They almost all have the safety catch now. And these are pretty easy on your hand, and they work very well. For the dreaded weeds. I like this one. You just punch it in there and twist a little bit and lift it right out. And again, look at that, nice wood handle. Now, we've talked about watering over and over. And remember, the new city restrictions require that when you garden, you have to have a nozzle that turns off. Now, here we have, this is really nice. Look at this, it's a little expensive, but you just, is it, just squeeze the handle? And that controls the flow?
That's right.
And you can get an extension for these too, right? In case you have to reach up higher, kind of like we get those grippers. But this is very nice, and of course, the nozzle, perfect for watering your plants. And Jimmy, when people get started in gardening, do you find that once they get involved, they stay very involved with gardening?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
And it's a good thing, because you get out of it what you put into it. You can do like low-maintenance stuff and still have color and edible goods, which is good for the budget. And it's really, it's up to you. Now, I want to thank you, Jimmy, for taking the time today-
You're welcome.
And our friends here at Hashimoto Nurseries in West Los Angeles. Remember, it's been here 80 years. If you got a question, I bet they have the answer for you. Thanks for joining us on today's gardening show on Aging in L.A. And we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Experts say Los Angeles will one day be hit with the big one, a major high-magnitude earthquake which will come with no warning and leave a huge impact. Hundreds or even thousands dead and injured, and billions of dollars in damage. It's a question of not if, but when such a quake will strike L.A. Are we prepared? Are you prepared? To help answer those questions, the city took part in Golden Guardian, a week-long series of statewide exercises designed to test our ability to deal with a catastrophic natural disaster or terrorist attack. On November 13th, the Shakeout Drill was held, a simulated 7.8 earthquake, and all more than 5 million people took part statewide. Here at Bishop Alamaney High School in Mission Hills, 300 students volunteered to act as victims of the quake, and they really got into character.
I'm burning my face, and I have a bruise on my arm, my wrist right here, you can see on my hand.
I have a burn injury, a little kind of a burn, more gruesome than a burn, normal burn. Then I have a scratch on my cheek and a head gash, so I'm a little messed up right now.
At 10:00 a.m., Bishop Alamaney's students joined thousands of other people throughout the city and millions statewide in reacting to a simulated 7.8 earthquake. These young people did what they've been taught to do when a quake hits. They got under their desks to write things out. In this exercise, the quake lasted a full two minutes. After the rumbling had stopped, they made their way through smoke-filled halls to a predetermined meeting area outside.
Mark?
Yeah.
Jonathan?
Yeah.
Students, I should not hear a word until we have roll taken. We've gone through search and rescue, not a word.
Of course, in a real quake, many of these students would be hurt. So in this exercise, the injured were taken to the school's football field, be evaluated, and then transferred to nearby Providence Holy Cross Medical Center to be treated. At a news conference here, Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger talked about why Golden Guardian is so important to all Californians.
It's one thing to talk about being ready for emergency, but it's another thing to actually test it and practice it and really see each year where the shortcomings are and the correctness shortcomings. That's what this exercise is all about.
Los Angeles Mayor Antonio V. Ragosa spearheaded the city's response to this fictional quake, but he made sure all city departments, especially the ever-critical first responders, L.A.'s fire and police departments, acted as if this earthquake had been real.
Imagine the most tumultuous two minutes of ground shaking you've ever experienced in your life. I'm a native Angelino, and I've been through my share of earthquakes, but nothing, nothing that I've been through, nothing that any of us have been through, will compare to the great earthquake.
Imagine that when you call 911, nobody will respond. Imagine that you have to wait around for hours, and sometimes days, before emergency response personnel can even contact you.
So as a city, how did we do? Are we prepared for a large earthquake and its aftermath? The fact this exercise was held at all means we're ahead of the game when it comes to being ready when the big one hits.
We can talk about preparedness, but unless you actually physically prepare for an emergency of this nature, you really don't know what comes up. What are the problems? Where are the kinks? What do we have to work on? Where are we strong?
Succeeded beyond our wildest expectations. We've ended up with 5.3 million registered participants. I think a lot more people heard about it through the news. And it's, we're trying to get the community to think about the earthquake problem. It's really easy to try and pretend it doesn't exist, because they don't happen that often. And watching the city do all of this work and watching the people of the city be willing to be part of it is very inspiring.
The city is prepared. And why I say that is, we in the Southern California area have gone through disaster after disaster after disaster. Earthquakes, brush fires, floods. And our first responders from the local county, state, have managed those and also have moved forward with recovery from those events in the past.
Rarely do we take the time to face the reality of the greatest natural disaster Southern California will face in our lifetime. But today, we take that time. Today, we do that exercise, because we know that one day it will come.
Make sure you're prepared for the big one. For tips on how you can get ready for an earthquake or other natural disaster, log onto www.redyla.org.
I got you something very special for our first anniversary. Now, close your eyes. Surprise, it's an emergency preparedness kit. Isn't it great? It's got food, water, first aid kit, and this neat emergency tool for shutting off utilities. Honey, we are going to be prepared for any emergency. Honey? Sweetie? I have one more surprise. This really cool cranking flashlight.
Get the message? Be prepared.
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for the first day of June, Tuesday, June 1st, 2010. Want to congratulate our Los Angeles Lakers on a win over the Suns and rematch with the Celtics. And we're looking forward to that this Thursday. In the meantime, I want to thank those council members who are here on time. If, please, call the roll, we do have 10 members now.
Alacon Cardenas, Han Weeza, Caress, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rose, Dill, Smith, Weston, Zeig, Garcetti, 10 members present, and Aquorn, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval in a minute.
All right, Mr. Cardenas moves, and Ms. Han seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zai moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. It's now time for our pledge of allegiance. If I could ask Ms. Han to lead us in a salute to the flag and ask everybody to please rise.
Thank you. Please place your hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, Sunday.
Thank you, Ms. Han. If we can run through the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda is the mayor's veto message, and nothing has been received yet, so no action is required today.
Okay. Next items, please.
Item two is an item notice for public hearing, and there is a card on that.
Let's call that special for the card from the public. Next items, please.
Items three through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held. Substitute ordinances are going to be circulated on items four and five, and there should be 12 members. Do you wish to hold those?
Yes, let's hold those till Mr. Krikorian is here. And we have 12 members, and Mr. Reyes, who are waiting both of those members. Next, 16 for Mr. Cardenas. And other specials, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Just like to hold 11 on the desk. We have a mini motion, some items didn't get in the committee report.
Okay. We'll hold 11, 4, 5, and 11 and 16. Any other specials, colleagues? If there are no other special items, going once, going twice, we will... There's no action required on three. And if we can move the... We're going to hold 4 and 5. Oh, wait, do we have 12 members now? Oh, we do have 12 members. Okay, let's take up 4 and 5. Okay, we're waiting for those. So we'll still hold 4, 5, 11, and 16, but on the balance, if we could please prepare the roll. And please tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. Yep, Mr. Smith?
12.
12, fourth with, without objection. Next items?
Items 18 through 28 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
There's no objection to consideration. Those are now before us. Do we have any cards on those?
There are cards on 19.
Okay. We will open and close the public hearings on the remainder. Specials, colleagues, 18 through 28. 18 through 28. Seeing none. Let's go ahead and take up the balance, please, and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Yep. 24, please. 24, fourth with, for Mr. Weeza. If we hear the supplemental council agenda?
On the supplemental agenda, items 29 and 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have a card on 29. We don't on 30. We'll close that. Mr. Labange, do you want to call 30 special? Or you want to just see through? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 30 and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that is approved. We'll now go to our public comment. Sean Murphy is our first speaker, and after that will be Arnold Sachs. Mr. Labange?
President, forgive me. Item 16 is called special.
16 was called special, yes, sir.
Right, okay, so very good. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Murphy.
Good morning, Mr. President of City Council. I've got a question for you. What happened to the Canoga Park Memorial Day Parade? Jill and I, my girlfriend and I went to Canoga Park yesterday morning, and nothing was, nothing was happening. The bus was still running, and I wonder what happened to the parade. Can you give me a, can you explain that to me? Also, I didn't like, didn't like what the MTA, MTA meeting was not run in an orderly fashion. It was running, those bus riders kept interrupting the meeting. I went down there to stop the fare increase, and the bus riders kept interrupting, interrupting the meeting. That, they, I, that has to be, that has to be done. I'd like to, next time I go to an MTA meeting, I don't, the bus riders should not be there. They kept interrupting the meeting. It was total chaos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. Mr. Sachs? We'll send 30 forth with objection. Mr. Sachs, excuse me, sir, left. Dr. Clyde Williams is next.
Good morning. Good morning, Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, Elsorino, North East L.A. On Thursday morning, the, sorry, Thursday afternoon, MTA eventually approved proceeding with the state route 710 north extension tunnel, we believe. But they're going to go for scoping, rigorous scoping, robust scoping, whatever scoping that they have. However, they don't even know what the project is. Some people think that it might be a tunnel. Some people think that it might be a surface route. Some people think that it might never occur. However, we're spending a lot of money, a lot of time, so we believe that it will occur. And based upon the current setup with the public-private partnerships, a project description, which is so vague that nobody can really figure it out, and the proceeding with the environmental process, we will spend a lot of money, and eventually, we might try starting it. However, it's going to be about $10 billion worth of work, which means that the toll roads through the tunnel will have to be at about $10 to $20 each way for four miles, five miles. So we're quite concerned. In Elsorino, well, sorry, the four representatives of the city of Los Angeles, the mayor, Mr. Katz, Mayor's Robinson, and Mr. Weeza, allowed the bill, the motion, to go through. So without any protection and without any reflection of the resolution that the city council passed. So I would highly recommend that the Department of Transportation, L.A. City, starts doing something really rather than just letting MTA run over us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sachs is our last speaker for public comment.
Good morning. Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. First, I'd like to thank you, Mr. President, for clarifying for me some of the comments I made regarding the gang intervention programs going to the mayor's office and the fact that the intervention workers were being taught how to form nonprofits. And I mentioned that that's so that for-profits can be created behind the scene, and they wouldn't know about it, and there's no way to audit them. And you mentioned that the gang intervention programs would be audited in mayor's office. So that got me thinking regarding the suit filed by the controller and the, trying to audit the city attorney's office. And can you clarify a little bit better why she's not able to audit programs in the city attorney's office, but able to audit programs in the mayor's office, yet both of those officials are elected officials?
It was agreed to voluntarily by the mayor's office.
Thank you. Well, that included all of the for-profits that'll be created to so-called run those nonprofits.
Yeah.
Then, Mr. Weston clarified a little motion when he was discussing his project at San Vicente and Pico. And he mentioned the fact that when you had hearings for AEG, some of the requests were waived and committed. And I remember when they were here for their billboard discussion, that being brought up. I remember there was a list of meetings being held, none including building and safety, but nothing regarding any waiving of any committee hearings and what would have been accomplished to that. But nevertheless, in this Metro West Side Extension Transit Corridor discussion, it said that a federal- said that a federal, full funding grant agreement with the federal government for a 2.3-mile extension of the subway from Wilshire Western to Pico-San Vicente in 1994. What happened to the 20 years? Why the hole? What happened to MTA? It isn't that grand.
That will close our general public comment. If you want to stay up, Mr. Sacks, we're going to go to item two next, which is called special for a card from you. So if we can go to item number two, please.
Oh, the California municipal bonds. Yes, I was wondering again, with the city's track record of issuing bonds, and again, this goes back quite a few years to when Mr. Fujioka was the CAO, and he had a rather, this is a rather long discussion, I believe, with Mr., with the councilman Cardenas regarding the issuance of bonds and how they would affect the cost and how, how they would be issued, and one way of issuing, the, Mr. Fujioka's way of issuing would have been $75 million, and Mr. Councilman Cardenas would have been like 10 times that amount savings. And I was wondering how these bonds would be issued, how it would reflect on the city's ability to issue those bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no action, just closing a public hearing. Mr. Sacks, if you want to stay up, we have items 19 to 29, also cards called special by cards from you. We'll take those up next, but let's open the roll on four and five as he's coming forward for number 19, Mr. Sacks. Please open the roll. Let's wait then. Let's do 19. Mr. Sacks? Item 19.
Could you put, put it up on this, Mr. Wilson, could you put item 19 on the board?
Yes, it's up there.
Oh. Item 19, DNA forensic background check. I believe when Chief Beck was here the last time, there was discussion regarding hiring of four clerks, or there are a fair amount of clerks like that, so I was wondering, A, have the clerks been hired, B, the expense involved in the hiring of the clerk, and what exactly is the DNA background, DNA backlog, where do we stand on the DNA backlog as of June 1st, 2010? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open the roll and hang on one second. Mr. Sacks, we're going to 29 next. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is noted. 13 ayes. Mr. Sacks, item number 29 is next, and that is the Environmental Affairs Department.
You put that up on the board?
Environmental Affairs Department, transferring its powers, duties, and functions to the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Sanitation, Building, and Safety and Transportation.
Oh, yes, what's great about this is you're taking some steps here in council. And so, I wonder, because it shows the public that here, this is the procedure we follow and want to change the city charter, yet when the LA Times did a story about voting in the chambers, and rules of the chambers show that you must be present to vote, that the chambers is considered the room, you didn't follow any procedure there to change those rules.
Sorry, sir, this is about the elimination of the Environmental Affairs Department.
Yes.
That might be more appropriate for our general public comment, but we have to keep it specific on this item, which is the elimination of Environmental Affairs. Thank you.
I am trying to be specific, sir. I'm trying to be specific in the fact that you made a series of steps in your agenda showing that you went through and you changed the city charter, and you amended this section of the city charter, and you did, wrong item?
It's not the charter, sir.
Wrong item? Is this 29 or 19?
Yeah, there's no amending of the charter on this.
This is just a transfer of personnel, services, there was no amending, no changing, no nothing?
Correct. The charter is not altered. That has to go before a vote of the people whenever you change the charter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Let's open the roll on number 29. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And Mr. Labange, I think, needs to make motions on four and five. Mr. Parks? Yeah, forthwith, without objection on 29. And I recognize Mr. Labange, we'll take up items four and five.
On four and five, members, I ask that the draft ordinance proposed by the mayor be disapproved, and the revised draft ordinances presented by the city attorney that differ only in some technical aspects be adopted. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on four and five then. Mr. Parks?
Let me just make one technical and friendly amendment on four and five, and ask that the CAO update the council during the financial status reports on the progress of this transition.
Thank you for that. If it's no objection, that'll be accepted as friendly. Please open the roll. Oh, sorry, Mr. Cardenas on four and five?
Oh, we're okay, we're good with this one.
Go ahead. Thank you, thank you very much. Also, if the CAO could report back on what is the current staffing plan for the YWAR program? Okay, thank you. Thank you. We will make sure that's included too, as friendly amendment. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are both approved. And now we'll go to item 11, called special by Mr. Parks.
If we could just hold that for a second, we're waiting for a written amendment.
All right. We'll hold that for the amendment. That will take us to item 16, and Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Council members, I know the morning seems to be going incredibly fast, but this is the item that has to do with the consideration and the report backs relative to all of the not-for-profits throughout Los Angeles that are currently utilizing city facilities. We've had a bad habit in this city of ad hoc addressing great organizations that are providing services throughout the city, yet at the same time allowing them to lease them out for a dollar a year. And one of the biggest problems with that is that regardless of whether we charge them a dollar a year, a market rate, or anywhere, anything in between, the city still has liability responsibilities. We still have a responsibility of verifying that the proper insurances are on the property and whose name they're in, as far as who they're issued to. In addition to that, when it comes to maintenance of these facilities, as you're very well aware, you could have a facility that might look nice, but if the roof is leaking and/or damaged, and it goes uncorrected, then that could actually cause thousands, if not millions of dollars of damage, and render the facility useless in the long run, which is counterproductive for everybody's purposes. So the reason why, I wanted to make sure that everybody understands, today, we're not voting on any final actions today, but we do need the staff to continue to work on these report backs so they can get them back to us, and as it develops, and as we learn about how this will actually play out in the long run, we need to have all of that information before us, before we actually make final decisions. So today is not a final action, but today is to make sure that the staff continues with the reports and continues the work so that we can get down to the point where we're going to either continue to do things ad hoc, continue to exempt a bunch of not-for-profits for whatever reasons, or we're going to actually have standards and then try our best to understand why, on a case-by-case basis, anyone is allowed to have anything other than the standard applied to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Cardenas. This has been a five- or six-year odyssey trying to bring order to the whole issue of city buildings. I think at the last count, we have about 100 buildings under nonprofit leases, many of them do not have proper paperwork, many of them, we do not know what the arrangements are as of month-to-month, our utilities, and it's important that as we've dealt with the financial policies as it relates to the convention center, special events, this was one of those last remaining chapters. As Mr. Cardenas mentioned, I think it's important to articulate that this is giving guidance to General Services to go out to these 100 buildings and to use these, this guidance as a matter of moving forward on negotiations and before any changes are made in the process. It will come back to the council. We realize that many of these buildings and nonprofits are important to local council districts, many of them do not have citywide impact, but the liability is certainly citywide impact. And so I think it's a step forward to get this process in place. I want to thank General Services, who put forth a policy several years ago, but the dilemma was because the city council hadn't adopted it, many of the motions that came forward that violated their internal policy, they weren't able to impose a policy. And so this gives us a first step to look at issues that is generally perceived that if the city went forward on a mere 50% of the market rate on dealing with the rent, you would be recovering somewhere over $4 to $5 million a year. But the way this is written is to give the council office a great deal of latitude in how and who they would like to subsidize, and how they would like to address these issues. But it's, again, coming back to the council. There's also an addition, just as we added, on selling of surplus property. There's a direction that basically identifies those nonprofits that have a direct relationship with the city and provide city services, that they would be exempt. And I think it's a matter of how those cases are made, so that it's clear that when this comes back, there's consistency citywide. The only thing I would add, and I'd ask the, that we added into the directions on this report, that these decisions should be made at the purview of the city council and should not be of the type that requires mayor's approval. So these are things that should be worked out with General Services, dealing with property in the district, dealing with contracts within the city, and address these issues so that the council office has the say in how they address these issues in their community.
Thank you. We have five more speakers on the queue. Mr. Labange is the next one.
Yeah, just remember, I think we should hear from the public. I didn't get this in my committee, and many of these facilities are arts or cultural facilities. And also, I'd like someone from the Department of the Senate Table, because I could think of four public buildings right now. Fire Station 27, which is the fire museum, Fire Station 30, which is the African-American fire museum, Fire Station 38, which is in the Harvard Museum, and, and how are those, the Los Angeles Police Museum, how are those going to be dealt with?
Can I comment on that? Can I, just saying, Mr. Parks, the reason it didn't come to the committee because the view was, is that it's buildings, not what's in the building. And the issue was trying to come with guidelines. The way you've explained it to me as it relates to these museums that are carrying on the activities of the city, those appear to be items that would be exempt.
Okay, with that being said, in previous to all of us, the mayors at the time instructed Cultural Affairs to become partners and go out and find partners to take city buildings.
But I think you may be jumping ahead. The issue is, we're trying to get some arms around the number of buildings, what the current lease agreements, and when these come back, they will be advising you as to what the activities are, and you can ask that out. But I don't believe you're going to be able to resolve that today, when we have 100 buildings that no one quite knows what they're doing and what the status are.
Mr. Parks, thank you. What I would, I support an assessment, but at the same time, we made partners with community organizations, whether they're art or other groups, that are there doing the job that Cultural Affairs cannot do due to previous budget cuts in the last century. That's in the 1990s. So again, Mr. President, I know I spoke a little bit and asked some questions. I think there's some public here. We are, it's only 10:31 and a half. If we have 10 minutes extra, I'd love to hear from the public to see what they would say to help brighten our perspective.
Okay, we'll go, we will continue with the queue of council members right now. There's 32 cards so far. Mr. Labange, and going from there, so we'll figure out what's the best way. 10 minutes would only give people about 30, I mean, 20 seconds each, so.
So here's what I would ask to the art community that's very creative. Make your comments in one minute to pass it on to somebody else, and inform us of what your passion is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon is next.
Council members, I have some of the exact concerns that Mr. Labange has. These organizations are providing services that are in dire need and have suffered tremendous cuts as a result of all the levels of cuts in not only government spending, but also in charitable giving, which is way down, and to impose this will literally be a death knell to many service-oriented organizations. In addition, it will, it will, it will hurt our sister-city program by imposing conditions on the transfer of property. You mentioned Lebanon, where we sent a piece of fire, and they would now have to pay 50% of the market value of that vehicle, and they're not going to do it. So all that goodwill is going to go for naught, and frankly, nobody's going to buy the equipment. The, the standard of one job per 10,000 is a tremendous imposition on the numerous organizations that are counseling-related. Bridge Focus, you know, the Boys and Girls Club even, is not focused on job creations with their grant, and therefore, it will not be able to meet the standard. They have a lease in Pacoima, and will probably have to ask for CDBG funds to cover the rent, which doesn't make any sense. In addition, the report relied on testimony that did not include the Community Development Department, which would be the most heavily impacted service providers, service providers that are monitored by Community Development Department and Community Development Block Grant, nor did this go to the HCD Committee, which manages the block grant funds. So I understand the need to tighten, and I understand the need to ensure that nonprofits are acting appropriately. But to not include Community Development Department in this analysis is a tremendous shortcoming, and also to not know what the specific ramifications of this are on the existing organizations. We should at least, at the bare minimum, have the ability to tell each organization that is going to have a negative impact here, what that negative impact is going to be. And I appreciate that we're going to refer to this back to another committee, at least I hope we do. But, but I have some very serious concerns about this. We have used the notion of renting city facilities, particularly when the facilities wouldn't be used by anyone else, as a way to provide additional services to the community without charge. And it's not as if they're getting something for free. They are providing human capital. They are providing service to our community, and to make them pay rent is, I think, is penny-wise and pound-foolish.
Thank you.
And so I strongly oppose this policy direction.
Thank you. Ms. Han is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, we are seeing tough times in the city. We've just gone through a very grueling budget process where we are attempting to keep bare minimum services operating, providing things to our residents, and we have cut, 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 cut. But I believe this policy has not, we have not explored it enough to understand what the consequences will be for the residents of Los Angeles. And I believe if we actually implemented this policy, it would have such a negative impact on our nonprofits, our partners, those organizations that we really depend on to provide the services that clearly government is not capable of providing anymore. We have been cutting back, you know, childcare services, we've been cutting back after-school programs, we almost cut back gang prevention and intervention services. And when you look at the list of the nonprofits that are partnering with in some of our facilities, these are preschool, kindergarten, after-school, gang prevention, senior citizens, homeless services, I mean, all the programs that we have decided government can't do anymore during these fiscal times. So this, to me, would just be cutting the legs out underneath our wonderful nonprofits, the ones that we depend on to provide these services. And that is just one city that I could not believe in, that really, this is what we've really would come to, that we're, would be charging our nonprofits market rate for these facilities. I am not comfortable with this yet. I've got a motion that I presented with Ed Reyes, and we've got a number of council members signed out. We'd like for this to go back to Arts, Parks, Tom Labange's committee, and at least get some of these questions answered. Has there been outreach? Do our nonprofits understand what this would mean to them? What kind of analysis have we done in terms of, you know, how this would save us money or make us money? It looks like we're trying to make money on the backs of our nonprofits, which, again, I'm not comfortable with doing. I don't think it's worth losing the partnerships that we have with these organizations. I don't think it's worth losing the partnerships that we have with these organizations, the goodwill that we have with these organizations. So let's send it back to Arts Parks Committee. Let's explore some of this before, and we would have to vote on this kind of a policy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Reyes is next.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'm torn in that I understand that we need to have that first blush, an understanding of what we have out there, so that we can figure out how to support our nonprofits. And the way it seems to be coming out is, the reaction I've gotten from nonprofits is, why are you going to penalize us even more now? So I think we need to shift the nature of this conversation, so that we can figure out how to support the nonprofits, understanding our asset base, and understanding where we're at as a city in terms of control. And I wanted to ask if we can get our CAO and CLA and anyone else who's involved in this discussion, the center table, I just want to ask a few questions. One is, one question is, when we look at this direction currently on item 16, can we have the ability to address the motion that Councilor Rosendale, Councilor Hahn, and Tom Labange, and I signed for Councilor Rosendale, to fold that into this policy direction? Are we going to be in any way penalizing the nonprofits as we go through this discussion? And will there be any kind of penalties and setbacks in the delivery of services? Just want to hear that for the record.
Karen Calphine with the CLA's office. This is actually like the first step in this whole process, is to have some sort of an overriding policy. With the next step was to go and have those discussions with each of the nonprofits. What this policy was attempting to do is, first of all, look at some general provisions. Like, for example, each agency should have a lease. There should be some general things that are applied in those leases, such as that they should have liability insurance, that they should be in good standing as a nonprofit organization, those kinds of, those kinds of general parameters. And then more specifically, where it comes to what to, what to charge as rent, those are the policy decisions.
That's secondary.
And that's correct. And what, what the intent was here is to have this overriding policy, and then to have those discussions. There are some important points that were made, and there, with regard to facilities that are through the Community Development Department, the cultural facilities and others, there are some other, there are some overriding issues that need to be taken into consideration when a lease is done. There may be deed restrictions, there may be grant restrictions. Those types of issues all have to be taken into account before a final lease is done for any of these. And the council needs to retain the flexibility to make exceptions to these policies as well.
So in your report back, how much time are you going to be given?
Well, it's also going to be dependent on what general services can accomplish, because these leases are all within, I think all of them are within their purview, and that's going to take some time. This isn't going to be an overnight, it's accomplished overnight.
So to be very clear, at this moment, nonprofits are not in jeopardy of losing their place in a facility?
At this point, no, they're not.
They're not. So it allows us the capacity to look at the motion that was presented by Councilor Rosendale and Hahn and Labange, to send this to Arts Committee, so that we can fold in these questions as you're going through your analysis.
Yeah, I haven't seen the motion, but yeah, that would.
See, colleagues, I think we can do both, because I think the biggest fear we have is those districts that have the highest level of gang violence, the highest level of need in services, where these nonprofits are housed. I know I house many of them in our abandoned libraries, in our buildings that are historic, but also underused, where nonprofits are being housed. I didn't say jail, I said housed. No, I'm just kidding. But when we look at that dynamic, it would be the last thing to do is put more pressure on them, to say, gosh, now I have to find a place for my services. And that's not what we're doing. We're not asking them to leave. We're trying to do is get our own house in order. So I would suggest that we can do both. Can we go on a parallel track? Have you, you haven't seen this motion?
Sorry.
And then if I can ask you to press for it again after.
I'm going to just ask you the question, if they can go in parallel.
I don't think this is in conflict, just on a quick read. For example, one of the instructions was for general services to report back on a timeline. I think the whole concept of fair rental rate is incorporated in the policy rather than a market rate, because there are other considerations that need to be taken into account. For example, if a nonprofit organization is going to assume responsibility for a property, then that would be reflected in whatever is charged. And that could mean that the rental rate would be lower than market rate. In many cases, market rate's not going to apply to many of these. So, and so I'm not sure, just like I said, this is a very quick read, but I'm not sure this is in conflict with what's before you today.
Okay. Thank you. Just think that, I'm pushing up again, but we can move on a parallel track, because I think we do need to get our house in order, and we can figure out ways to further improve our support of the nonprofits, as opposed to penalizing them. So I think that's the intent, at least that's what I like to interpret it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zain, and then Mr. Kritz.
Thank you. And I also support the review, and there's definitely a lot of organizations that need these. And I, looking through the list, some of these I question how they fall to a nonprofit category, when there's obviously profit being made, that's a whole nother subject. But building maintenance, the bills, the water, the power, et cetera, who's paying for that?
John Schob is with the CAO's office. It depends. If you go down the table, you'll see it's kind of a mixed bag. Some of the nonprofits are paying for utilities and maintenance, and some are not. It really depends.
So it shouldn't be fair, but if you look at the expense, the utilities expense, the water, the power, et cetera, summertime air conditioning, if we're picking up the cost of that, they have a place for a dollar a year. We need to, I think, include that in the report.
Sure.
If they are profit, and there are some in here, that I think if you examine, they're a profit entity, how they would be structured and how they get involved, there's, for example, I don't want to mention them by name, but the fact of the matter is, we need to identify the costs for the, the taxpayers are paying, the incidental costs to maintain the facility, the custodial services, the maintenance, the bills that come in for the regular operation of the site.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we're still getting information from DWP and also from general services on utility cost and building maintenance cost, so we would fold that into a subsequent report.
Do we have an estimate of what it costs annually for the maintenance and the utilities that we're paying for?
General Services uses a figure of, for a office building, 16-hour-a-day operation, about $3.11. If it's a 24-hour operation, it could be as high as $3.99 a square foot. So we're using a range of $3.11 to almost $40.
Do we have a total?
Do you now have it of a total? No, we're still working on that.
If we can include that in the report.
We'll include that.
Thank you.
Mr. Kritz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zain made one of my points essentially, which is, some of these buildings are pretty decrepit, and we, if there's a high cost to maintaining the buildings on behalf of the nonprofit, I want to make sure we're including that. And just in general, I want to know that we have a policy that doesn't put these folks, quote, "out of business," even though they're not businesses, but there are some, for instance, that are taking, paying a dollar in rent, and market rate would be $10,000. And maybe they could afford 500 or 1,000 and be able to survive, but beyond that, they wouldn't. I'm hoping we come up with a policy that allows us to get something that doesn't knock all these nonprofits out of business and allows them to continue to function. So I'm hoping we have an eye on that, and that as it goes back to committee, we keep our eye on that ball.
And I believe that was, that was considered when it went to the ITGA and the Budget and Finance Committees, is that there would be some flexibility retained by the council to make those kinds of determinations, and that would, the council would need to retain that.
We do have other council members, but it's for the second time. Since all council members who wanted to speak have been heard for the first time, I would say we go to the public now. So Mr. Labange had moved a minute per speaker. I think we have about 40 cards right now.
A 20-minute-plus public hearing. I actually give your passion one minute each. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So Ron Sosse will be our first speaker from Odyssey Theater Foundation. After that is Robert Spiro.
Thank you. I'm going to speak really fast. I'd like to talk about bang for the buck. Other people will talk about cultural impact, I think. The presumption that we as nonprofits could pay any kind of real rent is simply not realistic and based so far on absolutely no data. The vast majority of the nonprofits represented here were actually formed on the basis of the availability of donated facilities. All their resources targeted strictly to the services they provide. As one case in point, the Odyssey Theater was given a decrepit, long-time vacant old warehouse, and 22 years later provides a thriving, ever-busy three-theater community resource, a gem in the city's cultural reputation. Hundreds of thousands of bucks for upkeep and constant renovation, millions of volunteer hours, provide over 30,000 yearly low-cost admissions to great international theater, as well as services to youth organizations, drug halfway houses, senior citizens, so on, all simply for the $1 use of this old white elephant. That's bang for the buck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Robert Spiro is our next speaker. After that will be Stash Maleski.
I'm a retired deputy district attorney. My wife and I attend classes at Barnsdall Art Park. I am a taxpayer. I'm a board member of Highland Park Heritage Trust. I've been a Highland Park resident for 30 years. I get concerned any time I see the government abdicate its responsibilities, squander its cultural resources, and try to artificially monetize everything. It seems that the city has money available to it, you know, when it wants to give a parcel to a billionaire, when it wants to run, you know, shuttle buses for private developers and owners of sports teams, when it wants to grant electronic signage rights to developers. What about the people, what about the taxpayers who need these services? Why live in the city of Los Angeles if the city is not going to provide services to its residents? I am concerned about anything that would jeopardize our arts and cultural programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Spiro. Stash Maleski is next. After that is Anthony Robles.
Stash Maleski, Venice, Council District of Oregon. I was going to speak a little bit on the mural audience. I'm going to submit those comments in writing to you, Councilman Labange. I'd just like to say that it sounds like this discussion is headed in the right direction, and that we're looking for more ways that we can support our nonprofits. And I think that it was a good point that we should look at, not necessarily market rate, but a fair rate of lease for these organizations, which are adding so much value to our community in such difficult economic times. And I'd just like to say, I support the concept of it going to Arts Parks Health and Aging as an organization, a body that will be able to consider all of these issues from an arts perspective, and many of these organizations are arts organizations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Stash. Anthony Robles is next. After that is Renee Dominique.
Yeah, hi. My name's Anthony Robles. I'm actually the executive director for Bridge Focus. Initially, this morning, I was here for the Arts and Parks Committee meeting. We have youth that go out into our community, into Richard's community, into Tony's community, and do murals and cleanups and things like that. And initially, I came because we actually have a mural that we did, a beautiful mural on Chatsworth and Sepulveda, and right now, we have an order to comply to take that off. So I'm really concerned about that, and how the council's going to be able to help us with that. More than that, our agency, just to let you know, we're working with these kids in the streets, we're taking them off the streets, we're making sure that they get the graffiti off the walls, we're having them put it on canvases. Already, I've started a collaboration with Bravo Design. I've got kids going, doing job training at Bravo Design. They just did the avatar campaign. So we're doing a lot of great things. I need your help.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Renee, oh, sorry, before that, Renee's come on for Renee, but Mr. Labange's going to introduce a very special.
A very special school here, from Temple Israel of Hollywood. Please welcome this class and the teachers, Naomi Nedstetter and also Elaine Wasserman. Please rise, give a great welcome show, and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. I'm glad for Mr. Garcetti, whose mother went to.
That's right. That was my mother's shul. Welcome here. Great to have you guys all here. Thank you so much. Renee, please.
Good morning. My name is Renee Dominique. I'm director of development at Center for the Arts Eagle Rock. We're a nonprofit housed in a city-owned building. We've been there for 12 years. We're a mid-sized nonprofit. We serve as an extension to the city, providing services to over 70,000 people annually that are either free or low cost. We have a small staff of four and a half people. We operate lean and mean. We manage our budget very tightly, and if the city does want to propose charging rent to nonprofits that are in city-owned buildings, we'll need time to plan for this, to fundraise. And also, if we had a long-term lease on our building that we occupy, thank you, to the city, that we would be able to fundraise for a capital campaign, to do improvements, to help the city save money, so that we could write a grant to a large foundation, to get a new floor put in. So we look forward to working with you and finding a solution to save the city money, but also to continue our services, because we do not have a surplus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julia Salazar is our next speaker, and then Michael Sage will follow. And after Mr. Sage will be Arnold Sachs.
Hi, my name is Julia Salazar. I'm executive director of Center for the Arts Eagle Rock, and I want to echo what Renee said. We're in a city-owned building. We've been there for 12 years. We're under a contract with DCA. And what I would like is a long-term contract, so we can raise money to improve the building. Also, as a longtime Angelino, I fear so much for the nonprofits and passing this issue on lease subsidy and charging nonprofits. I've been in nonprofit world for over 30 years, and I've never seen anything like this. And just as an Angelino, I would really like more, given more to arts and culture in the city. It makes me proud, it would make me proud to have our city give more infrastructure to the arts and culture. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Salazar. Michael Sage, Arnold Sachs, and after Mr. Sachs will be Cheryl Johnson.
I'm a docent at Holly Hawk House. I sit on the board of Friends of Holly Hawk House and Barnsdall Art Park Foundation, and we're just, it's a very valuable organization, and the Hill is very valuable, and I think some of you understand, but a Frank Lloyd Wright building and an 11-acre arts park, we have no idea what it would really cost to run any of those things. And I think that if you try to extract out monies on these issues, it's going to be very, very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do up there. Cheryl Johnson is our next speaker. Mr. Sachs has waved his card. And then after that is Noel Courtin, or Courtin? Sorry, Noel.
I'm Cheryl Johnson, president of Barnsdall Art Park Foundation. I think as Councilman Alacon said, this proposal represents a death knell to a large network of nonprofits. This policy was advanced without consulting or considering the economic impact or viability on us. We face diminished sources of funding. At the same time, we face increased demands for our services and programs, which we're offering because the city isn't. Paying rent, whether it's fair market or not fair market, is not feasible for us. And I fear that the result of this proposal is that the thousands of Angelinos who devote hundreds of their own hours and dollars to contributing to the vibrancy of our networks, of our nonprofit networks, will stop their efforts. And I don't think it's going to generate any kind of meaningful income. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel, Paul Gamber will follow.
Hi, thank you. My name is Noel Courtin, and I'm a former cultural affairs employee at Barnsdall Park, now taking classes there. And this is a very familiar discussion, and I want to say, for the 14 years I worked at Cultural Affairs, I think almost all of that time, we were working to partner art centers out to nonprofits, and it was always a difficult task. These organizations are marginal financially. These organizations are marginal financially. They basically struggle to pay one or two staff members, and then everything else operates on volunteer basis. Your goal should make sure, should be for these programs to flourish and succeed. That's what the bottom line has to be here. And I understand the fiscal pressures that we are all under today, but I think you need to resist acting like a mortgage broker of the past and trying to sell revenue on paper that won't work in the long run and have it blow up in your face and the organizations fail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Gamberg is next. Shannon Murray will follow Mr. Gamberg, and then after Shannon Murray will be Dennis Boils.
My name is Paul Gamberg from Backsack, the support group for the three thousand class slots a year of kids and adults at Barnstall Park, which predates as a gift the Depression and has managed programmatically to survive the Depression and should not. You have a very momentous and important thing that councilmen don't have every day. You're passing policy, you're looking at policy today. This is real legislation. With respect to Mr. Parks, you can't separate the buildings from the people. If the buildings stand alone, you have termites and graffiti. You have to consult the people that are operating the buildings, doing the public good, to come up with good policy. In one minute, I cannot summarize Mr. Chavez's wonderful imperfections in the Selling Puff piece called "The Spreadsheet" that establish a market rate where I've submitted a document from a real truth that shows you that market rate submitted is fictional. You're not voting on a rate. You're voting on a policy. It's premature. Send it to committee, please.
Shannon Murray. Shannon Murray. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Shannon Murray. I'm the acting executive director of Lamp Community, and we are one of the agencies that would be affected by this. We recently secured a twenty-year lease for a dollar a year after seven years of working on it. A little bit about Lamp. We are home to fifty formerly homeless men and women. This also is the site of the only public laundromat, showers, and toilets in Skid Row. From the Village Building, we provide a variety of programs, including emergency transitional and permanent supportive housing services, as well as a wellness center, and food for five hundred people, services to two hundred people a day. We recently completed renovations on this building that we would not have done if we didn't have this long-term lease. Changing the conditions of the lease with the city could have significant and negative consequences for the people of Skid Row. We do not, if we had to pay full market rent, we could not maintain our current level of services and staffing, which would mean that more people would end up on the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I'm going to do to try to get as many voices as possible, I know there's sometimes four or five cards from the same organization, so I'm going to get to as many organizations. If we continue at time, I'll come back to multiple speakers from those organizations. So if somebody from El Centro, if you'd like to be the speaker or somebody else.
Good morning. I'm Dennis Vidas. I'm client with the Centro del Pueblo in Echo Park, and the facility that we have is just great. It provides a safe environment for the kids in the community, and we have a lot of activities for them that keeps them out of gang violence, and it's just an amazing facility for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra, if you'd like to come up for the balance of that, and we'll set it a minute for you.
Thank you, council members. My name is Sandra Figueroa. I'm the executive director of El Centro del Pueblo. I just found out we were on the list on Thursday evening, and I had been working with the council office. We actually leased a public parking lot that was underutilized, and at the time, with Councilmember Jackie Goldberg, we did come up with a fair rate, so we are paying our lease. But I have to tell you, when we entered into the lease agreement in 2000, it took us two years to really come up with a business plan to be able to pay even this rate. So, I am very happy and encouraged by Ed Reyes's motion with the other council members that it go back to committee, and that you include some of the testimony of all the nonprofits, because it did become a hardship, and I came prepared to show you the human capital and the numbers that we provide and the money that you're going to earn from charging these nonprofit rates is not even equal to the amount of work we put into the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have two, two cards from Hilltop Nursery School. Either Matthew or Angela, if you'd like to come forward. One of you initially, we'll see if we can get the time. Or split at thirty-thirty, however you want. Go ahead.
And I know you know us very well. Mr. Garcetti, this is Hilltop Nursery School, because among the nonprofit organizations that will be penalized are subsidized childcare. I just want to say that it was kind of a shock to learn last Thursday via Mr. Paul Gamberg and not anyone from your office, by the way, that this is happening. We are well-known from being proactive. We put an entire fight last year to get some money from CDB, and we cannot afford to pay any rent. But what shocked me with this is the lack of transparency. You should first talk to the communities and the nonprofit organization, because in the proposal it says no comment. That's all. Thank you.
I just want to add, hopefully, we're one of the good ones. We do pay our utilities and the maintenance of the school, and you have to consult these nonprofits. We've been there over fifty years, and we want to stay another fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have a number of cards as well from Spark. I don't know if Deborah or somebody would like to, and we'll get to as many, as I said, if we still have time left after the twenty minutes have run out, we'll try to get to more from the same organizations. I just want to make sure, Deborah or Judy, if you'd like to.
I'm Deborah Padilla, the executive director of Spark, the Social and Public Art Resource Center. The city made a promise, provide services for public good that the city cannot entirely afford on its own, and in exchange, we will provide you with the facility that was either falling apart, abandoned, or going to be demolished. And you, as the nonprofit, invest all that you have, human capital, sweat equity, and stakeholders who believe in your good work, and with this facility, your organization can build a strong pillar for a sustainable institution. I want to hold the city to that promise. As stewards of these facilities, many of us took this responsibility seriously. We understood the caveats, the rules, and the guidelines. We pay all the utilities, the maintenance, and upkeep without seeking city funding, and provide services primarily in underserved, underrepresented communities. This proposed issue before you has not been given its due diligence. I urge you to send it to Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And just real brief.
Very short. I just want to say that we cannot underestimate the chilling effect that this is having already on the nonprofits that are serving the city of Los Angeles. As funders say, are you tied to the length of the councilman's service, for example? Are you able to do this capital improvement that you're applying for? It's very important to understand that there will be job losses, that there will be grant losses, and this is actually income to the city of Los Angeles. So there, we need to calculate the losses that are associated with the changing of the agreements in the nonprofit sector. Thank you.
Okay, Teri Phillips.
My name is Aileen Barnstall. I've traveled a very great distance to be here with you today. In 1926, I gave Barnstall Park to the city of Los Angeles. The playgrounds for the children, the house for the uses of art, and the grounds for the pleasure of all. No community can be great until the least of its citizens is touched by beauty, truth, and freedom. It was my wish that Barnstall Park belonged to all the citizens of Los Angeles. Do not take it away.
Thank you. Since we haven't had the chance to thank you, Aileen, thank you for the park as well. And it's good to see you. You look great, considering. Felipe Sanchez is our next speaker. Is it Felipe Sanchez? He's coming around.
Good morning, city council. The proposal to end the city's nonprofit lease program threatens the advancement of culture and the social well-being of our great city. On behalf of many gravely concerned citizens, I ask that you reconsider the proposition to end the lease program. We are deeply concerned that you have not conducted a social impact report. Have you considered the impact this proposal would have on the nonprofits of our great city? What are the ramifications of undermining the stability of senior centers, youth centers, art centers, museums, and centers for the mentally disabled? We must ask ourselves how the one hundred and sixteen organizations on this list contribute to the health and safety of our city. I ask that you conduct a social impact report in the name of public health, public safety, and culture in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LeBanc, those were the twenty minutes. There are twenty other cards I can either read into the record.
Does anyone have any, actually, I think the council got their point, and by the way, this is a process that starts, but it's a process, and we all know, some people very upset. The world has changed dramatically as far as funding, so we're looking for everything. But if I got to ask to the community there, this will come back. I would hope, Mr. Cardness, that we could go to committee so we could help to refine, as Ms. Hahn's motion is. I would certainly vote for that today, but this is a start. Yeah, okay.
This is going to go through the committee process. We're not voting on final action. Nobody's rent's going to be changed. No obligations are going to be changed today. It is months and months away. And if you have your way, the way this council operates sometimes, it may never happen. Okay?
All right. But I wanted to say, Mr. Parks, Mr. Cardness, I think it's important that everybody has their story told, because there are previous times that we went to these people, Mr. Alco was here and said, "You take over what cultural arts can't do." So we made partnerships, and now all of a sudden the partnerships are changing, not for all, but for some. So I think there needs to be that discussion to see what's best for the city as we move forward. So with that said, does anyone need to speak again, or could I ask the council then to deliberate?
Mr. LeBanc, I'm going to read the names of the remaining people into the record so that we have it as an official record.
Thank you.
All right, and I will read them now before we go to our council members. Danielle Brazil, Donna Peirman, Irena Cervantes, Ashley Fontanetta.
Do they indicate what organization they're representing?
I can read that, too.
Could you also read that? Thank you.
Yes. Danielle Brazil, Arts for LA. Donna Peirman, individual. Irena Cervantes, she's an artist, professor at Cal State University, Northridge. Ashley Fontanetta, Coach Art. Wendy Butts, LA Conservation Corps. Mary Ann Hayashi, Central City Action Committee. Carlos Callejo, individual. Larry Lizenby, PhD. One Generation. Jeffrey Caperton, People Coordinated Services of Southern California. Claire Knowlton, Magorti Arts Center. I can't read this person's writing, but I think he's from the Hoover, oh, Levi Kingston. Hoover Intergenerational Center. John Stepling, theater artist. Ruth Sizlowski, West Los Angeles Family Resource Center. Nyla Arslanian, Hollywood Arts Council. Mary Ann O'Brien from BAC SAC. Anna Bruinsma from Spark. Carlos Rogel from Individual. And final stack, Laura Para, El Centro del Pueblo. Ana Guerra, El Centro del Pueblo. Carlos Martinez, El Centro del Pueblo. Robert Aguayo, El Centro del Pueblo. Our first speaker on the queue will be Mr. Garcetti. Okay, Mr. Cardness.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's comments, however, saying that we're doing this in the dark and nobody's invited. We have had committee meetings on this matter, and there have been many nonprofits that have come forward, and many individuals who are here today who have come forward in the past. And again, I'll state again, there is nothing that's going to occur today that is going to change one iota of any of the contracts, any of the agreements with any nonprofits that are occupying city facilities today. That is easily months and months and months away. In the meantime, if I could have the city attorney's office come forward, also the representative from the CAO, and also the CLA, and also GSD. Thank you. Now, one of the things that I want to clarify for everybody listening, and I'm glad that people are finally listening to this matter, the city of Los Angeles has hundreds of facilities. Over a hundred of the, a hundred nonprofits are actually occupying a portion or all of a particular facility that is owned by the city of Los Angeles. As it stands right now, many of those agreements do not clarify who's going to fix the roof, who's responsible for the flooring, who's responsible for the upkeep, where the line is drawn between general upkeep and heavy upkeep, things of that nature. If a nonprofit doesn't have money to pay rent, I seriously doubt that if there's a thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar roof repair to save the building, to make it, to make sure that it remains occupiable, I'm sure the nonprofit doesn't have the money to pay for that. And with all due respect to GSD, if the nonprofit doesn't have the money to pay for a roof in such a situation where it's tens of thousands of dollars, have we, the city of Los Angeles, the council, the mayor, have we given GSD thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to fix a particular roof on a particular building today?
David Pascal, Department of General Services. In most cases, we don't come to the council.
Where's the line item in the budget where we've given you money to maintain all of these facilities to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and millions of dollars in this budget that we just passed?
We're not allocated any funding to maintain the one hundred and ten facilities occupied by the nonprofits that are owned by the city.
Exactly. Are we requiring the nonprofits to have a reserve in order to do so?
When you look at the terms and conditions in probably ninety-nine percent of the leases that have expired, we normally require the nonprofit for a dollar a year to be responsible for all building repair and building maintenance.
And are we verifying that the nonprofits are actually following through on that obligation?
We don't have any facility managers to actually go out and inspect those facilities on a periodic basis to make sure that the tenants are complying with that specific term and condition.
Thank you. Now, to the city attorney, if that roof falls, falls in and it hurts one child or a couple of workers, or some people end up getting injured or what have you, or, for example, if the roof actually starts to leak so badly that it ruins tens of thousands of dollars of wonderful equipment that is serving the community, who's liable for that?
Annette Bogno with the city attorney's office. Councilmember Cardness, I think you're driving at the conclusion that the city would be held responsible.
At the end of the day, the city would be held responsible, right?
At the end of the day, the city, the city will be the deep pocket that has to pay for this. And in point of fact, many of the nonprofits, they do carry insurance, there's some that do not. It's, it's a staffing issue as much as anything in the Department of General Services. You know, they receive the advice from our office that they should be checking these things, and their return back to us is we're not staffed to do that. So, if we find out that there's no insurance that's in place, it's too late, something's already happened, and the city is being sued.
Okay. And then some of those lawsuits could cost a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars or more, depending on what happened, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then where does that money come from, from the city? Do we have a big fat insurance policy, or where does the money come from?
It comes from the city's general fund.
It comes from the city's general fund, which is the same fund that actually funds police officers, maintaining of many issues, maintaining of these facilities, et cetera. So we're basically hurting our own self. We're hurting the very nonprofits that are concerned today, that some people think we're trying to hurt you. The bottom line is, all we're trying to do is literally get our house in order. And whether you like it or not, in my opinion, even though one of my colleagues a little while ago said, "We couldn't get sued, that we would never, they wouldn't win the lawsuit," somebody could bring an action against the city saying that we're being negligent with public property. They could. I hope they don't. It's not going to help the situation, but if they do, all it's going to do is force us to do this anyway. All we're doing, ladies and gentlemen, is finally getting our house in order. And when we get our house in order, it's better for you. And the bottom line is, every single nonprofit occupying each individual facility is going to have the opportunity to negotiate that lease. And I seriously doubt that there's ever going to be a case where we're going to charge market rate on one of you. I seriously doubt that we're going to get fifty percent on the dollar from one of you. It's very likely, hopefully, what we arrive at, at least from GSD and all the various departments that can report to us, is that we figure out, at least, we have to get a minimum of twelve cents a square foot in order for us to give GSD enough money to maintain the facilities. Because right now, there's absolutely no money dedicated, allocated anywhere in order for for us to step in and save you from that situation in case the roof is caving in. And guess what happens if something like that happens? We have to vacate you. And guess what? We probably don't have another place to give you for free. So you're going to be out on the streets.
Mr. Cardenas, could you push your button?
Or paying market rent to somebody else. I'll push my button again.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, you're our next speaker.
Mr. Cardenas, you're doing so well. I'm going to give you my three minutes. If you can continue, and I'll push my button again.
Thank you, colleagues.
Mr. Reyes.
The reason why this is so important, ladies and gentlemen, is because we've been going on for decades ad hoc. And even though you're a nonprofit and we're a public entity ourselves, going ad hoc is not good for anybody. Going ad hoc, it just hurts you as well. Question to the city attorney. Do we have an obligation to make sure that we have all of the basics in order when it comes to who's liable, who has insurance? If we have a contract with somebody, isn't it our responsibility to make sure that they're adhering to their elements of that contract?
Well, it's a combined responsibility, but yes, the city is responsible.
Yeah, but ultimately, if, for example, somebody's required... Say we have a nonprofit A. We're charging them a buck a year, but in the contract that says that they're supposed to be responsible for upkeep and maintenance, right? Don't we have an obligation to make sure that they're adhering to that obligation, to that responsibility?
Yes, we do.
And then what happens if they're not keeping up maintenance? And say there's a wooden stairwell, and it happens to be broken, and it's been broken for years, and there's witnesses to that? And then all of a sudden, somebody trips and falls on that piece of wood? Who, at the end of the day, can be sued in that scenario?
Probably the nonprofit, and then also the city. There would be a claim submitted to the city.
Yeah. Any decent lawyer isn't going to just sue the nonprofit when they see, "Oh, the nonprofit was responsible for maintenance. We're only going to sue them." Isn't any decent lawyer going to go ahead and sue everybody? The property owner, the person occupying, the board, everybody?
Yes, and to the extent that a landlord is aware of a tenant's failure to maintain property, there would be a legal basis for liability.
Exactly. But the fact that we actually have a department that supposedly has men and women who can actually go out there and inspect, and I say supposedly because we're not giving them the money to do so, couldn't that be entered into the situation and trying to say that we were negligent?
That would be the evidence submitted.
Yeah, correct. So how does that scenario that you and I just dialogued, how does that help the nonprofit? How does that help the city if we find ourselves in that situation? Give me the upside to us allowing that to happen.
I don't think there's an upside. I think it just defers the pain. This is something where the city needs to be maintaining the properties, and if it's not budgeted for on the front end, then we pay it out in claims on the back end.
Okay. Thank you very much. So our time is limited, and thank you very much, Mr. Parks, for allowing me to continue to speak. But I do have some amendments to the motion, and one of them is on item number two. It says instruct the general manager, Department of General Services, GSD, and to prepare lease agreements that also that include, that it says city attorney after GSD. In addition to that, on number three, it says, it needs to say to instruct the city administrative officer, CAO, GSD Bureau of Engineering, Land Records Division, to track the number and amount of subsidies for below-market-rate leases and real property sales by council district for submission into the financial status report. And also amend to read, instruct GSD and the city's land records division of the Bureau of Engineering to track the number... I'm sorry. I read what it did say. Now I'm going to read what it should say. Instruct GSD and the city's land records division of the Bureau of Engineering to track the number and amount of subsidies for below-market-rate leases and real property sales by council district and submit them to the CAO regular status updates in every financial status report. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I feel we're doing a really healthy, constructive dialogue here because we are... The way I see it is, the initial motion, item 16, what it does, it creates a structural, financial set of parameters on how we could evaluate. But I see coming from Councilor Rosen Dahl and Hahn and Labange is we're talking about who is in the buildings, how we are going to impact the entities that are inside the buildings. So one wants to have it back in the committee so we can have a report back, which is Councilor Labange's committee. And Councilor Parks and Councilor Cardenas, they're asking for a report back on how to look at these parameters and a framework before any decisions are made. So if we voted yes on both, I think they would be complimentary. But I want to be very sure, because there's something that's being assumed here, and I want to make sure it's clear. If we move forward on 16A, do we at any time set in place any kind of payment and/or restriction to any of the nonprofits in the buildings? Is that being done by saying yes today?
No. This only takes you to the next steps, not negotiating any leases or changing any leases or anything.
We're not creating extra pressure, we're not saying to any one entity that's renting on the building that you have to pay at market rate.
No.
What we're saying is, if you were to pay market rate, this is what it would be based on the study.
Right. What would have to come back is some sort of analysis on a case-by-case basis for each of these facilities. And at that point, even a lease would come back to the city council for...
So it gives us time for, as policymakers, we could start assessing, understanding what's in our respective districts. It gives the nonprofits and the social service providers that other reason to do more self-analysis as to what they provide, the value of that service, the dollar value that is attained and benefit, that benefits the city and the community, so it works for both sides of the equation.
That's correct.
Yes. So colleagues, I think we can vote yes on both. That would be my good feeling. I don't see any threat from item 16, because it's being stated that we are not going to increase any kind of fees at all. All we're going to do is learn what we have on our accounts, what we have in our buildings, and if there's anything else that's beyond that, I'd love to hear it, but that's the way it's been interpreted. And I would think they're both complimentary at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alcon.
First of all, the sky is not falling. Nobody's suing the city of Los Angeles because buildings are falling on top of them. We have effective partnerships with hundreds of nonprofit organizations, as do just about every city in the nation, that rely on expanding the pool of services that we can provide to our community. I have no problem with creating standards, and I have no problem with a boilerplate understanding of where we should begin the process of entering into agreements with nonprofits to facilitate our needs as a city. But I have a problem with a lot of the details in the recommendations, because it would kill a lot of those same organizations. The fact is that we have a greater chance of a gang member walking, that would have been in one of these facilities, shooting somebody than any building falling on top of somebody, or any window in a building falling on somebody. And that's what we are trying to prevent. Real life changes, real cultural enhancement, real human improvement. We have to place a value on the services. If the nonprofits charged us in true value what they are giving us, we would owe them more money. That's the fact. And so we cannot give them money, but we have some facilities that are unused. I have a building in Silmar that is falling apart, but it is the core of our Yo Valley and Jeopardy program, and fixing the air conditioning alone would decimate the budgets of both these organizations, run essentially by LAPD and its supporters, and then Yo Valley doing job development, economic development, improvement in the community, and they would be shut out. Because they're in a facility that nobody else would rent? Give me a break. They don't deserve that. We built the senior center in Pacoima with community block grants, with the specific intent of providing senior services with nonprofit entities. Now we're telling them they have to come up with 50%, and in the case of the Pacoima Senior Center, that would be $125,000? That's 50% of what the market rate would be for a facility that they were able to get because they made us eligible for the community development block grants that built the building. Isn't that ironic? That we're using their quality of service to get federal grants, and now we're charging them for the building that they got us the grant for? That does not make any sense. So I think we are throwing the baby out with the bathwater. If we have a few agencies that are backward on their existing agreements, go get them. Make them pay or make them shut down, and get other organizations that can't pay do the job. But I'll tell you, in some cases, there are agencies that are backward, they can't pay, but they nevertheless are providing such a valuable service, we shouldn't shut them down anyway. But that's what I thought the general managers were doing. That's what I thought CDD was doing. That's what I thought our system that enabled us to have a diverse level of human service, including the nonprofit sector, was doing, and I believe it was right. Now, that doesn't mean that every organization is operating correctly, and we shouldn't hammer those that are cheating us. But the vast majority of these organizations are our partners. They're doing good for our community, and we ought to support them, not shut them down.
Thank you, Mr. Alcon. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you. I was just going to ask a question to the city attorney on, you know, what are we talking about here? I mean, is it... How many lawsuits have been filed against the city from nonprofits that have been using our facilities?
I don't have any personal information.
Well, what do you think?
I would not know. I don't work with claims at all.
Can someone tell me the answer to that?
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't have the answer.
The question is, how many lawsuits have been filed against the city by nonprofits who are using our facilities? That's a pretty good question, because we need to know what's broken. I mean, what are we trying to fix here? And if this is a huge problem for the city, we're getting sued by nonprofits, then I have a better understanding of what's broken here.
Let me...
Perfect. Absolutely perfect.
I was going to say, let me clarify, too. We're not saying that the nonprofits would be suing the city. We're saying that the members of the public. As between the city and the nonprofits, there is a partnership, and both parties are in agreement. And typically, the nonprofits take on an honest burden, and they're going to maintain the facility, they're going to do all of these things. But in the event that there's a problem with that, and frequently it's because they don't have the funding to address the problems, in that case, the city still does remain liable to the third parties, meaning the public.
But that could be the case anyway. If we begin negotiating these leases and we actually do negotiate below-market value, that could still be a problem.
I believe that there's an assumption behind all of this work that these buildings are going to end up being better maintained because we have a policy in place, but I'm not going to speak to the city.
But we don't know that. Again, for me, colleagues, I disagree, Mr. Reyes. I don't think... I'm going to vote no on this, because as I read it, if we adopt this today, we are adopting general lease terms effective immediately, that all nonprofit organizations will be financially responsible for fair market rate, or a rate that reflects other factors. Okay? That's in the report. I can't vote for that. That's effective immediately. We're creating a lease. I don't have enough information before me, which is why, colleagues, I think we should send this matter to committee. I want these reports back. I want to know what we're talking about in terms of lawsuits. I want to know what we're talking about in terms of the maintenance and the physical structures of these facilities. I want to know, you know, what services these nonprofits are providing to the city. I want all that information before I can vote on this policy. So I'm going to vote no on the policy, but hopefully the first vote will be to send this to committee, and let's get all these answers first, and then come back with the policy. It reminds me of our special events policy, which, again, I don't think we vetted completely, and we have a lot of problems with that as well. So I'd like to see all this go to committee.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
Madam President, members, I think there's a lot of work that's been done. Important, we all agree we should get a checkup, right, Paul? So this is a checkup. But I don't want any immediate policy that says rents have to be... It has to come back to us. But this is a checkup. Okay? And I don't believe, in the end, wherever we are, the city's always going to be at the end of the line when your colleagues come from the other side of the street to say there's a problem. You know, really. And I don't know if there's been significant problems recently, in the last decade at all, but I think it's good to get a checkup. This is a checkup on our facilities. But at the same time, we have to check with our departments to say, is it important for the Los Angeles Police Department to have a museum on York Boulevard? Is it important for a variety of fire department services to use the city building to get the museum message out? Yes. Is it important to partnership with community to do art programs or youth programs, and to what extent? So I just know, who's with the CLA right there? If we vote on this today, but to send it to committee to do all this stuff there... Because I do want, Mr. Parks and Mr. Cardenas, a hearing, and we could do a joint hearing if you want to do it on this one subject here, whatever it is, to get that message out so that we know. But what impact does it have on anybody now? Because Ms. Hahn quoted... Because she read the report faster than I did, and she's more schooled at reading it in such a fine way. Does it... If we act on this today, does it start immediately?
No. Well, let me clarify. It puts an overriding policy into place, but there isn't going to be anything done immediately to any of the nonprofits, because those aren't going to be occurring overnight. One of the... No, you're correct. It says, it gives an overriding instruction to begin to prepare leases, but it also says that a variety of factors need to be taken into consideration, determining a fair market rent, a fair rent, because there are a lot of considerations that need to be taken into account. And Mr. Alcon's point about the grants, that's an important point, and those definitely need to be incorporated, as do any other legal restrictions on the...
But here's my time in the sense here. If you say, to get to A to B, you got to vote for it today, but A to B tells you it's effective immediately, then you lose the opportunity to maybe come up with new solutions in the committee process, okay? So what I ask, Chair, on the issue to say to start immediately on this, let's go ahead and have the assessments be made and have the reviews be made, but the word "start immediately," I think that gives us an opportunity, as council members, to make the right decision when it all comes back to the table. Bernard and Tony, I know you worked very hard on this, but at the same time, I think it's good to have a little more hearing since we are in. It's not to happen immediately. You're not counting on this money in this fiscal year. You're looking for opportunity to do what's right for the city, as all of us are. So, members, I just ask a friendly motion that deletes the word "effective immediately."
Move the entire matter into your committee.
Well, move the entire matter into my committee back within 60 days.
Is there a second on the motion? Second. Mr. Wizar for the first time, then Mr. Parks and Mr. Reyes for the third time, Mr. Cardenas for a fourth time. Mr. Wizar.
Yes, thank you. As I read the motion, 16A, and now reiterated by Mr. Labange, it says that item number 16 on today's council agenda be referred to committee. So I'm not quite sure how we could vote on something and then send it to committee, either doing one or the other today. So I don't know where this discussion came to vote for both items. And even if we are told that the report itself will not implement a policy, will not do anything... I've been in this council before. We are told verbally that something is not going to happen, and then we are told, hey, but you voted on it that one day. So, colleagues, I would ask just to be clear, that if the council is so inclined that we just refer the matter to committee, to be clear, and not do both, no matter what side are you on, because that's going to create a lot more confusion for us down the line. I have a lot to say on this policy. I do think there's a number of questions that have yet to be answered, a lot of clarification that needs to be made, and I would hope that we do send it to committee before we vote on this uncooked plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wizar. Mr. Parks is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our colleagues, I'm going to go over this one more time. We've asked the General Services Department, and they've been working on this since 2001, and they have not been able to manage our resource, and been criticized heavily by the council and the mayor's office about asset management. But yet, we've added to that by having over 100 buildings in which they have no criteria of how to manage. And Ms. Hahn, you asked, what do we fix? And Ms. Hahn, you asked, what are we fixing? We're fixing several things. You wanna verify the nonprofit status of those who have these buildings. You wanna verify the community benefit, which many of these buildings, no one knows what the community benefit has been because many of them predate the people that are currently in office. They wanna also verify who's responsible for what liability. They wanna identify all of the properties that are under this current category and who's responsible versus the city versus nonprofit responsibility. They also wanna verify with the council districts as to whether there is a legitimate community benefit and whether there should be any subsidy level. Many of these, as I mentioned earlier, predate people who sit in this horseshoe, so you did not have a role in bringing them into the nonprofit issue. The other thing is, is that without giving guidance to General Services, they do not have the ability to come back with the reports we're asking for. And so, I don't disagree in the sense that it should go, come back to committee, come back to several committees once they have done the work. But if you go to committee now, you will be asking them the same thing that these two committees that just met asked them for. So, I would agree that it should go to them with guidance. They can't do anything on leases or anything else without coming back to the appropriate committees. And the appropriate committees, at least today, are, some of the buildings are cultural affairs, many of them are not. And so, ITGS, ITGA, who's our landlord, should be the lead about how buildings are being dealt with. Certainly, if it impacts the general fund, its budget and finance, and if there's a segment of them that deal with cultural affairs, then a wrecking part, then those should, uh, more appropriately, also go to arts and parks. And so, as we go forward, the things that it doesn't do, it doesn't eliminate anyone's current, uh, tendency in any building. So, the policy does not address, does not touch anyone currently. It does not impose any immediate restrictions or mandate on anyone that's currently in the building. It does not come, uh, as it relates to, this did not come about due to the current budget crisis, because in 2001, uh, we did not have per se a budget crisis, yet General Services was working on this. You may remember John Muckrey was in General Services at one time. Subsequent, it was Alvin Blaine and now there's a third general manager. This was worked on when Muckrey was the general manager. And so, that's how long it's been in the process. So, I'd ask that we move both motions and ask General Services to come back and responding to both. And when they get the response to both, they go to the appropriate committees and then come to council. And that's the only way you're gonna get your arms around knowing what the extent of the problem. For those who are concerned about liability, uh, many of you are aware that we had so much, and we're not saying nonprofits have added to this, but we've had so much liability just this year. We had to go out and bond for $50 million of money 'cause the general fund could not pay the liability of people who sue us from a variety of angles. So, this is about cutting down the potential liability, it's about bringing forth order to something that's not been dealt with appropriately in the past. And we can get into each building, we can get into each, uh, organization, except it's premature to be talking about any of those issues. And as is stated over and over in the policy, the council office has a large say in identifying the community benefit and also what the terms are as relates to, except, uh, exemptions are in a long ways out and where these subsidies come from. So, if we can't move it forward to give General Services that direction and ask them to come back, then we just add years to a policy of just sending a motion in saying, give a building to someone, not knowing what the legitimacy of it and the city maintains continual liability. 110 buildings is a lot of city buildings to not have control or understanding of what our liability, what the amount of dollars that we invested and whether, when they come back to us, whether we could even afford to maintain them. And this is what we've tried to do with the joint committee, moving forward to say, here's some guideline. General Services may come back and tell you that there are no nonprofits that can afford 50/50. These are just guidelines that we tried to come up with similar to the, uh, issue of dealing with the same language of convention center, special events and other subsidy policies in the city. And so, they may come back and find that none of these match, but the only way we're gonna find that out is put them to work and have them come back. I don't believe they'll be able to come back to us in 60 days with some guidance about 110 buildings, with their resources, I think they took a 30 percent cut in this year's budget, so it's gonna take more time. But we need the information before we can start even discussing individual buildings or individual programs, or what the potential loss of services are. We need the, if, the basic information with General Services. So, I'd ask that we move both motions to General Services and ask them, when they come back with that report, that it goes to ITGA, Arts, Parks, where is appropriate, and Budget and Finance.
Is there a second? Second for Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Krikorian for the first time, and then Mr. Reyes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members. Um, I agree, Mr. Parks, that all of the issues you described, very important that we move forward and trying to get a handle on the dozens and dozens of specific situations that we have here and try to provide some order for it and to try to draw some, uh, distinction really among these different things, because there are situations where clearly a small, as someone in the public described, a nonprofit that was created specifically for a specific location, uh, on the assumption that they will have subsidized or free rent. We also have situations where we have national organizations that are, so there's, there's very different situations, we need to get a handle on it. The problem that I'm having with the, uh, the staff recommendation series, number one, the number one recommendation does say, adopt a nonprofit lease subsidy and real property sales, uh, policy that is attached, and the attached policy would go in effect under these, under this recommendation, the moment we vote upon it. Uh, the first set of recommendations, general terms and conditions are effective upon council approval of policy. That would be what we vote on when we vote on number, the number one staff recommendation. The general lease terms that would be effective immediately, including fair market rate, would be effective the moment that we adopt staff recommendation number one to adopt this subsidy and, and, and policy. So, I'm concerned that we're saying that this wouldn't have immediate impact, but in fact, under the express terms that we're voting on and recommendation number one, with the attachment of attachment one, it would, in fact, set that policy. Now, we could say that, uh, well, you know, some, some of these nonprofits are operating under an existing lease and so they wouldn't be impacted until the end of their lease terms, but let me ask, if, if staff knows offhand, among the 12 pages of nonprofit organizations that are included on this list, do we know how many of them are on long-term leases or how many of them are operating on a month-to-month or at-will basis? And, and if there are some that are operating on an at-will basis, on a month-to-month, uh, basis, wouldn't they be impacted starting on the first of next month by our adoption of a policy that says that they have, let me see if I can get the language, that effective immediately, all nonprofit organizations will be financially responsible for fair market rate or a rate that reflects other factors? If they're on a month-to-month, wouldn't that go into effect beginning the first of next month if we adopt this policy that says it's effective immediately, that they have that responsibility?
Uh, councilmen, um, in cases where you have an expired lease, uh, the nonprofits are currently on a month-to-month, uh, agreement, and that month-to-month agreement will stay in place beyond July 1st, 2010, until such time as the council adopts a new policy and provides direction to staff to negotiate new leases.
But, yes, exactly. And as of the moment that we pass this today, the staff recommendation, one of the things we're voting on is, adopt a nonprofit lease subsidy and real property sales policy attached as Exhibit A. And Exhibit A says, effective immediately, all nonprofit organizations will be financially responsible for fair market rate or a rate that reflects other factors. That means today, when we vote, we're adopting a policy of financial responsibility on behalf of the nonprofit organizations.
You're absolutely correct, that's what the language indicates, but after the draft was developed and submitted to committee and council, and after, I believe, consultation with the city attorney, it was determined that any existing leases with nonprofits would be exempt from the new policy.
Is that reflected on the--
It is not reflected in the report.
Well, colleagues, respectfully, and with respect, and I wanna say with respect to the very hard work that I know that council members, the committees and staff have tried to put into this, and it is an important objective that we're trying to, to pursue here. But I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that we vote on what's in front of us, not what we're told this should do. We vote as policymakers on what is in front of us. And what is in front of us right now is something that increases financial responsibility for nonprofits throughout this city, starting today. So, I think that we can't do both of these things, they are mutually exclusive, so I think that we have to support the motion, uh, 16A to bring this into committee, to fix some of these things in writing so that we know as council members what it is specifically that we're voting on and what the impact will be on nonprofits throughout our city.
Thank you. Uh, we have Mr. Weezer for a second time. Mr. Weezer for a second time, then Mr. Reyes for a third, Mr. Labange for a third, Mr. Cardenas for a fourth, and Mr. Parks for a fourth.
Well, well, thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian, and that's the point I was making. I've been in this council several times now when we are told, when we vote on something, but yet we're told here verbally that, oh no, but this is what it means. One month down the line, two months down the line, whatever we voted on, they're just gonna pick up that piece of paper, whatever we voted on, and that is what stands, that is black and white what we voted on. So, I agree with you, Mr. Krikorian, I, I think we, uh, uh, they're not, uh, as compatible as, uh, some have said, 16A and the actual report here, because if we vote on that report, it goes into effect immediately. And I agree, I, I think there are a number of things we need to do to, uh, better manage our leases, to keep consistency with the many nonprofits, to find ways where we are better landlords. Uh, however, uh, we do, as Mr. Alakon had pointed out, want to preserve a lot of these services and we've put this in immediately as this report says, we may put some people out of business. So, we need to look at this, get to the problems we wanna get at in terms of consistency and better manage a lot of these leases, but we wanna make sure that our primary goal here, if we so agree, is to see how we can continue these services in our communities. And if we vote on this report today, we're not gonna achieve our primary goal. So, I hope that we do send this back to committee, get a better refinement and address some of those issues we wanna address, but, um, if we vote on this today, it's gonna take us down a path that I don't think many of us wanna go to and we're not there yet.
Mr. Zion for the second time.
Call the question.
Uh, Mr. Zion has called the question, there's four folks on the queue, is there objection? Is there an objection? Calling the question is always just to end debate, calling question is just to end debate. Okay, there's, so, uh, there's an objection to it, which means it requires a vote. Um, all members that have, that are on the queue are for a third or fourth time, so it is a majority rules vote. If we can please open the roll. End debate, call the question, call the question. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
Okay. That passes. Um, Mr. Clerk, could please walk us through the motions in reverse order.
Last motion made by Councilmember Parks, a seconded by Councilmember Cardenas, was to approve both motions and then have GSD report back to the ITGA, Arts, Parks Committee and Budget and Finance.
That is our first motion before us. Anybody need any points of clarification or are they clear?
Point of clarification, we wanted it to go Arts and Parks first.
No, can't, can't lobby, that's our point of clarification, Mr. Labange, but, but thank you for the additional last minute. You can yell that out in the, in the horseshoe, but I can't officially recognize you for that. So, uh, if we can please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Three ayes, nine noes.
Okay, that does not carry. Next motion?
Next motion was by Councilmember Labange, seconded by Councilmember Alakon, and that was to move the entire matter, uh, matter to committee and have it come back in 60 days.
To, to the Arts, Parks, Health and Aging, is that?
Don't believe the committee was identified at that time.
All three, Tom. Yeah, I have no objection--
Go on that.
No objections, we're all committees.
Sorry, hold on.
Yeah, but it goes to my committee first. And that's what I seconded.
What's our written motion says that? Our written, our written motion says, take it back to your committee.
Okay, so, is Mr. Labange's motion redundant with 16A? Is it the same thing? Mr. Labange, you wanna withdraw that to, it's, it's, uh, the city clerk was saying it's--
Members of council, I think it should go to Arts and Parks so we feel from the variety of people--
Hold on, I'm sorry, 'cause we, 'cause we called the question, we can't lobby, but in terms of--
I'm not lobbying, I'm just trying to explain. The only way I know how.
I tell, that's, I'm sorry, Mr. Labange--
And that is, too, I have no objection. No objection to going after it comes to my committee, then we get severe public comment, but you go to your committees.
Okay.
About the buildings that are not-- Uh, Mr. Weston sits on my committee too and he--
I know, but I'm saying it's within the purview of--
Okay, I'm sorry, folks, we'll have to hold on.
For sure, for sure.
In order to have this just, just by our own rules, we do have to reopen debate if we're going to engage in, in back and forth on it, regardless of whether we agree with the points of view or not. Calling the question means it ends debate. So, um, Mr. Labange's motion, if he doesn't withdraw, it is before us, just to send to Arts, Parks, Health and Aging, is that correct?
I have no problem, it should go after, it goes to Arts and Parks, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Parks, and then back--
Okay, to send to all three. Please, please open the roll on that motion, as clarified. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right. And is there anything, Mr. Clerk, in 16A that is needed anymore then?
No, I believe by that motion, it now refers the entire motions back, with the committee reports, back to committee.
Okay. So, we will note that. Thank you all very much and thank you for your presence here and for your patience today. And with that, next order of business, please.
Item 11 was being held on the desk for an amendment and that has now been circulated.
Okay. If nobody wishes to be heard on that, let's accept that as a friendly amendment. Please prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And that had, had a public hearing, nobody else reopened that, so, uh, we'll note that, uh, we had a card from Donna Pearman on that as well. Uh, next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting an interim.
Those are posted and referred.
Desk is clear.
Mr. Reyes?
Items 17 and 22 forthwith, please.
Okay, 17, 22 forthwith, without objection. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Labange?
Yesterday, Memorial Day, where we celebrated at Forest Lawn, uh, at the memorial of many service folks throughout, uh, the county of Los Angeles, many from the San Fernando Valley. In addition to that, Mr. Garcetti, for announcement, I rode through a new bikeway on the Los Angeles River last night, as I told Mr. Reyes, I saw several, several families walking, I saw several people fishing, several cyclists, it's a great sight to see people using the bikeways of Los Angeles River in your district and Mr. Reyes' district.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Labange's referring to new bikeway, which will be officially opened when the work is unveiled about a month from now, but it's, uh, been available right in the Elysian Valley section, uh, south of Fletcher Boulevard along the river. So, thank you, Mr. Labange, glad you enjoyed that. Any other announcements, colleagues? And we did test those fish, I think we had a report in LA River Committee, right, Mr. Reyes, and the fish was actually cleaner and healthier than most of the fish you find in the ocean.
And growing.
And growing. So, congratulations on everybody for cleaning up the LA River, especially you, Mr. Reyes. If there's no other announcements, do we have any adjourning motions today? If I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions in honor of individuals who have passed. Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Mr. Reyes, I'm gonna wait till tomorrow for Mr. Rosado's return, uh, that we all honor Dennis Hopper, who, uh, passed, the resident of the 11th District. And also, I'd like to ask for adjourning memory of Jeremiah James Pubbly, who recently passed, is an accident, is a, uh, very, uh, special, uh, snee, scro, uh, snowboarder. Uh, he, uh, his life was cut too far short, and I ask for adjourning his memory.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is behalf of, uh, Mr. Weston and myself, and we'd ask all members to join and second this. Uh, announced the passing of Albert Vera, longtime community leader, passed away, uh, on May 31st, uh, from a heart attack. Uh, he certainly will be missed for his renowned generosity. He was born in Naples, Italy in 1934, became a Culver City resident in 1950, and served in the US military from 58 to 60. He opened Sorrento Italian Market in 1962 with his wife Ursula, and the following year. He has two sons, Ralph and Albert Junior, who are also educated in the Culver City schools. Uh, he was committed to his community, uh, very active, most recently served as a chair of the Baldwin Hills Conservancy in 2002. He's a former mayor of Culver City, uh, and one of the community activists recently commented that his-- that his dedication to the city, his residence, business is legendary. He'll be long remembered for his untiring efforts to make Culver City a better place. He'll also be remembered for his service as a city council member from '92 to 2000, as a mayor in '94, as a member of Culver City Civil Service Commission in '81. He was also a member of the American Legion, the Elks Club, Knights of Columbus, Culver City Education Foundation, the Culver City Chamber, and the Exchange Club, and also the Culver City Democratic Club and the Culver City Sisters City Committee. He survived by his wife Ursula and his son Albert Jr. Less unfortunate, Ursula is very sick, and he had just taken her to the hospital and then passed away, I think, the following day. And so he has been a mainstay on the west side of the city-- of the west side of this region for a number of years.
Thank you very much, Mr.-- we'll do all members on that. Mr. Smith?
So to council adjourning memory of Richard D. Beltran, or Dick Beltran as he is known. He was born in 1932 in East Los Angeles, moved in 1944 to the San Antonio area. Dick worked for rubber aircraft and then joined the United States Army during the Korean War, where he was airborne. He came back from the war and married his first love, Regina, or Reggie as she is known in the community. Went back to Castle at L.A., got a master's degree in engineering, went on to work in the aerospace industry, where he helped develop today's GPS systems. Worked for the used missile aircraft and radar systems for another 20 years. After he retired, he became very active in the LAPD, in the LAPD PALS program, was chair of the scholarship program, volunteer surveillance team, was one of the founders of that nationally renowned program. After his first wife died in the 80s, he met and then fell in love with his second wife, Assemblywoman Paula Bowlin, and married Paula in 2004. Very short marriage, but a very loving marriage. They were a great couple. Dick Beltran was one of those people that had a constant smile on his face and a song in his heart. He was just a wonderful person. He died a few days ago of cancer, and I know-- I talked to Paula the other day.